I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for April 7th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
And Commissioner Goss.
Present.
Motion carried.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Schwartz?
Full move.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Goss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, we will have public comment regarding items on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit and for, and we ask that you do state your name in place of residence. When we have exhausted all comment inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. And just to also remind you that even though we will not respond to you at that time, we are listening to you and we will get back to you at the end of the meeting or on a different day if it is something that we cannot answer tonight. But you can come up and talk to us after the meeting as well. Hearing no comment inside the chambers, are there any Zoom participants wishing to comment on items on the agenda? Hearing no comment, we will move on to our work-study session. We are going to begin with our administrator search discussion. We did hear from both Yo and Yo and Double Hall at our last meeting. And I know many have been working on that and looking into it and doing some research and just figuring things out, so it's time for that discussion.
Well, I thought it was a clear case for me between the two different companies. I would like to pursue having a contract with Yo and Yo.
I also think they were the better presentation of the evening. There has been some, I think Chief Emmerich has said that he is interested in the position. And I would like to discuss the possibility of hiring him without a search and using the services provided by one of those companies. So if we look at what I believe the public has shared with us, what they are looking for and what city staff are looking for, and I was taking notes as people were sharing their thoughts, trustworthy, reliable, at least 10 years of experience in municipal work, leadership integrity, hardworking, dedicated, accountability. Some of the city staff said that they wanted to work on customer service, team building, leadership training and communications training. I am really interested in using, rather than spending $20,000 on a search, using that money to, for customer service training, team building, leadership training, communications training for city staff and hiring Chief Emmerich as our city administrator. He's done an excellent job. He's worked for the city for almost 25 years. This is his, correct me if I'm wrong. Chief, fourth time you've been the interim administrator. He's doing a very, very good job. Communication is outstanding. I've been nothing but impressed with him since he came on.
I agree with Commissioner Castleberry. As interim administrator, Vince has done a really good job. He's only been on the job for nine weeks and he's taken care of problems that haven't been taken care of by the last, as long as I've been on the commission and several administrators prior to that. He's gotten more done in nine weeks. And he's impressed me. He's expressed interest. All I've heard for the last five years is the community and the business leaders here want somebody who's invested in the city, somebody who cares about the city. And I don't think we're going to find that bringing anybody in from the outside. I think there was, once again, we're just going to be another stepping stone. And, you know, for that reason, I'd like to make a motion to hire Vince Emmerich as our administrator and direct the city attorney to work with Vince over the next two weeks to bring us a contract that we can review and approve on the 21st.
I'll second that.
I would say this, you know, is a slap in the face to our community. We have had a discussion about openness and transparency. And we have consistently heard from Chief Emmerich that he was not interested in the position. So to come and present this to the commission, when we're supposed to be talking about the process to allow our business leaders, our community development leaders, our various groups to provide input in terms of what we're seeking in the next city commissioner, or excuse me, the next city administrator, to then have this vast change unloaded on the commission, unloaded on the city, is not appropriate, does not meet the standard of public trust. And I feel is short in terms of what we want to accomplish with our work here. Vince may be the right person for the job, but if he's the right person for the job, then he should be able to compete and stand up next to those individuals who are applying for the job. And let him, for the rest of his career, have the standard that he went up against everybody in the state and the nation, not that he was gifted this position from four commissioners. I think that's what our public deserves. And to come out of the blue with this is concerning.
I think it's a slap in the face to say that we're gifting that to him. I did extensive research on what the city staff asked for. I have copious amounts of notes from the years I've sat at this dais and listened to what everybody said that they would wanted in a city commissioner, or excuse me, a city administrator. I, I think Vince has shown through some very, very difficult times in our community. He has stood very tall. He has been a strong representative for the city and a strong representative for the people. Just regardless of who you are. I don't think that this is gifted at all. I think this is looking at what our constituents want from the city. We talk about customer service. We talk about communications. We're going to put $20,000 into a search when we potentially have the best person sitting here, where that money can go into team building, customer service training, leadership training, communication training. That's where our money needs to go. Chief Emmerich has been here for almost 25 years. He sees the pitfalls that we have. He knows them. He's already starting to correct them. I take offense to saying that this is a gift to him. That is not it. And I take offense to that, saying that I haven't done my due diligence in having this conversation.
You use the word potentially the best candidate.
Yes.
So we don't even know if that is the best candidate. I also feel that we had extensive discussions about wanting public input. We had the input from the city employees. We did not open that input to a further group of individuals because we were going to get that input from one of the two search firms. And as a result of that, there's people that would like to share. I've heard concerns and comments from, you know, citizens that wanted to voice their inputs. I also know that there were individuals from the city of Adrian that wanted to apply, who are vested in the city of Adrian as well. So we can't say that Vince is the only one. And again, I don't say this, that Vince is not the candidate for the position, but I think of examples like Nate Parker, who went through the search and stood up against superintendents across the state. And the board made the right decision to hire Nate, but they also did so with the eyes wide open, looking at, looking at other candidates, knowing that that was the best fit for, best fit for the city.
Well, this is the first I've heard of this. I have had several conversations with Chief Emmerich and had never been given the inclination that he was interested in the position. And I don't know that he is at this point. I agree with Commissioner Banky. We've just gone through a month and a half at least of looking at firms and doing our research and talking with community members about what they want in the process and what they want in a city administrator. And again, Chief Emmerich might be the best option. That is, you know, possible, certainly. I think he's done an excellent job. But there might be other options out there. We just don't know. I'm surprised. I'm not exactly sure what else to say at this point. This is a really uncomfortable, really, really uncomfortable position to be in, not just for us, but for the chief. Yeah. And I hope you allow us all some grace tonight.
Do you feel comfortable sharing, Chief Emmerich, what's changed? Or if you don't, that's okay. I'm just asking.
No, that's fine. I have been a steady no throughout the process. I've had a couple of conversations here recently. Asked if I would listen to a potential offer. If that was something I would be willing to explore, and I said that it was. And that's, that is essentially how we got here.
So there was a offer that was made to you from the commission without two commissioners' knowledge of this process, or can you expound upon that, please?
Yeah, no, no, there was no, no offer. It was merely a conversation of, you know, if this is something that I was willing to do, would I possibly consider the idea? So I said that I was willing to consider it.
And now that this has been discussed in an open forum, anyone else who might be, might have been interested in applying, now are going to think twice.
I also think that we had an opportunity for public comment. And now with public comment closed, there's a motion on the table. No one was aware that there was going to be a motion to appoint Vince tonight. And therefore, people who either were in favor or against this motion now have their voice silenced because the way the agenda was set up.
Thinking for maybe what's best for, and I don't know. I don't know if this is what's best for the city of Adrian or not, but I guess it's what I get paid for up here is to think about. Okay, so this has been thrown out here. Vince is possibly a good candidate for this position. It'll be a challenge for other people in the city who might have been interested to now apply. Is it best at this point to amend the motion? And I don't even know if Chief would be interested in this, for a one-year contract? A one-year kind of interim contract? I don't know. Just throwing that out there. But then would we be back in the same position in a year?
Well, the motion, as I understand it, is to appoint, to begin contract negotiations. So if there is a contract negotiation, he is not hired until that contract is approved. So whether it be six months, a year, two, it's, it's pretty standard. City of Adrian has a pretty standard contract when it comes to the administrator. So I don't know. I'm not, I'm only telling you from the legal side. It's not necessarily a set timeframe. No, no contract is with our employees.
And I also think that that was part of the discussion that we had in terms of the flaws of our previous contract and work that could be taking place to update that, again, with people at the table.
The contract will be updated. What I'm saying is we typically don't guarantee one-year employment. So anyone can be fired. It's still an at-will employment. So we don't do terms, is what I'm saying. So when you, when you're, when you hire a city administrator, it's not four, six months, one year, five years, 10 years. It's we are hiring you. And if you are fired for cause, there's this. If you are fired not for cause, then generally there's severance and other things that go with it. But the wording of the contract is going to be redone, no matter, I don't care what we do.
But the commission could, the commission could set a standard of, you know, a one-year contract and then have that contract renewable every year, and then with or without cause. If we, if we chose to do that. Superintendents traditionally have a three-year contract, but it can be fired with or without cause. And then a school board can choose to just not renew a contract and then a person just times out.
Sure. We can write the contract however the commission directs me. However, I will say that we should probably follow the industry standard, not necessarily what the school does, but what a municipality does. And I have several of those contracts that we could review, once again, no matter who you decide to hire.
So what I'm hearing is that, this is, this is my understanding, is that some are not wanting to spend the money on the search when they have a a great candidate, in their opinion, already here, and want to spend that money in that team building area and in that annual review evaluation and all of that. So I guess, but I'm also hearing that there are, you know, people in the community that were interested possibly. Is this something, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there. Is this something where we do have a search for a little bit on our own with like, basically what can happen, like, I know Heather can do those, like where it goes to MML and we don't, and we open it up just for a brief period so that there are candidates? Or do you think it's already tainted, Commissioner Roberts? Is that what you were saying because of that conversation? I'm just asking here, you know, is that an option so that people can? And there's still a search. It's not the same kind of search, but we're using, being more fiscally responsible possibly with that money? Because were we going to have that money to do that team building and all of that? I don't know. I'm just asking these questions out loud and talking out loud. Yeah.
That was directed to Commissioner Roberts.
And the one question, if you thought that, yeah.
I have another question.
I, I, I don't want to. $20,000 for a search firm and all the stuff that was going to come with, what I was hoping with was Yo and Yo, I thought was a good deal. So I'm not concerned about spending $20,000 for a search and for the training and the, the handing off that was going to happen. Now, you know, if we had a chance, we're not going to get it for free, but this is going to sound terrible in the papers, but the money doesn't concern me right now. That's not what's of concern.
I would echo that in the fact that when we look at even $30,000, it's not, it's a little over one one-thousandth of our budget. So in comparison to the day-to-day operations that we're doing, this will cost less than the proposal that's coming forth to clean out the Adrian Inn. I think that's a pretty good value for our dollar.
Yeah, and what I was just asking is, do you think that it's, now that this motion was put out there, do you think that people will not apply because of that? That's what I was asking. Is that what you were saying, Commissioner Roberts?
I have no, nothing to base that on, except that is my belief. Yes. We've talked about that before when we've had other, we've asked for certain businesses to do things without going through a bid process. And then other businesses, you know, don't want to bid on it or can bid lower, same kind of thing.
I do feel like we're talking time, a lot of time to bring someone new in to do the search. I think that Chief Emmerich has sat in that seat for, this is his fourth time. And in nine weeks, he's done an extraordinary job of making positive change. And when you talk about the time it's going to take to do a search and bring people in, when we know some of the significant problems that we have, that we can start fixing now with some of that money, it doesn't mean that people still don't have input. I don't feel that Chief Emmerich is the person that is not going to listen when people say, here's the changes we need to see in this community. That is not, that is not how he has behaved in all of his years in law enforcement. He is a positive change maker. And when people come to him with problems, he finds solutions. So I feel differently that this is, that the negative conversation that's happened, I don't feel that this, that is what we are trying to do or say. I am, I believe truly that he is a perfect fit for our community, that there are some significant problems. And Chief Emmerich has already vetted some of those problems in the administrative position that he's in.
I don't think that the question in my mind is with whether Vince is choosing to throw his hat into the ring or not. I think the question with my mind is with the commission changing the view on this timeline. Both firms presented, we knew that this was going to be a multi-month process. When we had our one-on-ones with Vince, we talked about long-range plans, short-range plans for him to work and get things done, and he was doing that. I just think that we owe it to Vince to put him up against those that want to apply so that he can hold that position in his own right, or not. If possibly somebody else is a better candidate and an opportunity for our, our public, as we've talked about time and time again, to give input, to meet, to complete surveys and to share those opportunities. And I guess we could probably do this all night, so I'd call the question to.
Well, I think, one thought to that, I feel if they're internal, if they're from very far away or whoever that candidate is, even if it was already in contract negotiations, I really feel that that component should still happen, like, like an open house, like a meet and greet. Because that's what happens with those candidates that come forth that come to interviews. That's what they did before when they came here and we had people come here and interview. They did those meet and greets. And in my mind, that is something that would, that still needs to happen no matter what, for sure. Just because then you can really hear that public. I know, I just know that that's, that's something that the public wants. And I know that that is something that, that we've heard over and over again. That no matter what, that component does need to happen. Are you, can I ask you another question? Are you, are you interested if it means going through the process with, within the search? Like if we, if we go with a search firm, like going, excuse me, going through that process?
Yeah, I have no problem going through the process.
I just didn't know, so I wanted to ask things.
You know, I don't, I just don't feel like we're rushing into this. I think we've got somebody that's qualified. I've talked to many people in the community. Commissioner Banky, you told me a couple of weeks ago that you had as well. And people were impressed, but you told them it was a really low bar, that he, the problems that he was addressing. I don't believe it's a low bar. I believe it's things, as I stated earlier, that haven't been addressed by the last three administrators. It continues to be, you know, it's been a problem right up until nine weeks ago when we put, put Vince in the interim position. He's, he's done a wonderful job. He's taken care of the problems. He's fixed so many already. And frankly, I think he should have an opportunity to enjoy the fruits of his labor. And I think if we, if we go down the search road and we had both search firms tell us what a difficult search it was going to be for a number of reasons, including people who are from elsewhere that have, you know, 3%, 4% mortgages, getting them to move with the mortgage rates around 8.5% would be very difficult. Compensation levels were going to have to be much higher. And quite frankly, I think going on a search when we know we have a good candidate and that ultimately, hopefully, we would all agree on, would be disingenuous to those people that we're talking to or who might come forward. So that, that's, I, I really feel, I won't even say potentially, I, I think Vince would be the best candidate. We're about there. I, it's just the way I feel. That's why I made the motion.
Commissioner Goss, I'd like to just make one correction. Yes, I did give you feedback related to Vince. And that feedback was that people had been praising Vince for replying to emails. And I told them that that is a very low bar because we should always have gotten that response to those emails, not to the significant work that Vince had been doing as well, which the significant work that he's been doing, I will compliment and recognize on that front.
Thank you for correcting that.
My concern is that whenever you have a, a local or an internal, I guess internal is the right word, and you have an internal candidate, it's, we've heard this over, we've heard, we heard this the last time, that it scared people away from the search. I, my, my only reservation is that now that it's out there, will people say, oh, they're already talking about, if, I'm just going to go in the scenario that we go through the search, okay? Are they, are we not even going to get highly qualified candidates? Because they're going to say, oh, they're already looking at an internal, I'm not even going to bother applying. It worries me. That's what you're implying, right?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that does concern me.
I would say that there's opportunities for people to go up against. And usually that is an executive, the executive search process. That is one of the first questions that's traditionally asked by a candidate. And that, that can sway a person to move that direction or, or not. And in many instances, that could or couldn't sway the, the commission based on who was, who was there.
I was just gonna see if there was more discussion before I move on to the motion. That's why I'm asking, looking around, just making sure. So can I clarify something to our city, from our city attorney on this motion? It's, it's not technically to, it, the motion's not technically to hire, it's to go into contract negotiations, correct? From what you just said, I'm just asking.
Well, I believe his motion exactly was to hire him and to authorize contract negotiations. But you can't hire without a contract, so.
So it's, the motion would need to be amended to go into contract?
No.
Oh.
The motion is fine as it is.
Okay, okay.
Understand that if you vote yes, you still have to have a contract that is approved by this commission before he's hired.
And the vote is to hire or not hire?
To hire and enter contract negotiation.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Goss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
No.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Goss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So you will begin that then, Burke?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the library cafe remodel, I will turn it over to interim city administrator, Finn Summerick.
Yes, as the owners of the building, the library leases from the city. And when they want to make a change to the structure itself, they need permission from this commission to do so. In your packet, there's a memo from the library director. And essentially what, what she is looking to do is to remove the doors that were put in place for the cafe and replace them with the same original window that was removed to put the doors in. That's, that's essentially the, the change they're wanting to make. So they had preserved that original equipment so it'll match, the window will be the same as all the others, and that's the only change they're looking to do right now.
I do think, just to bring up for discussion, because I was there last week and spoke. There is a restroom that's up in the former cafe area. And unfortunately, it's not aligned, so all paper products, paper towels, toilet paper, those sort of things don't match the rest of the building. So that's been closed and they're looking to turn that into a closet. So that could be something that's forthcoming, so might be good to maybe have this conversation so they don't need to come back and ask in six months or a year.
What do you mean by they're not aligned?
So you know how you have the big rolls of toilet paper? All the other ones are the small rolls. So when you buy products, you're not buying, you have to buy two types of products, not one. So paper towels don't fit, the paper towel holders, those sort of things.
Thank you for clarifying. And we can move right on to the Adrian Inn discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Adrian Inn, Matt, do you want to cover that part about the property that's being removed this week? Also, Commissioners, I'd like you to consider allowing us to miss the point. We might be interested in, I know Jay has spoken to a couple and
So with the approval from items cleaned out of the Adrian Inn rooms, all the furniture and all the belongings that were left, that will allow us to get started on the abatement process. We are getting bids back on Thursday. So once we have the bids back, we'll sign the contracts and move forward with that. But the, the resolution tonight is just to kind of speed the process up and get everything moving, moved out in order to get the abatement done and the demo done as quickly as possible.
Matt.
Yes, sorry.
We're here. My understanding is too, there is time is of the essence in order to get the remediation done before the summer, because there's a we don't do it now, we got to wait until fall.
Yeah, so the, the contractors are going to get booked up really quick here. Generally during the summertime, these contractors work at schools. So if we don't get them on the schedule very quickly, they could, their schedules could fill up and we might be pushed out to the end of summer.
And the furniture has to be gone before they can go in and start doing the remediation.
Yeah, so the asbestos that they found was on the ceilings. In order to remove all that, all that furniture has to come out or else it'll be contaminated as well.
So the, the question I have here is, so this is a thirty thousand ish dollar process that we're moving around, and then we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars for asbestos abatement and demolition. But yet we have an offer on the table that will tear that building down within six months and provide us money. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So my, so my concern is if we're concerned about spending twenty thousand dollars on a search, why are we spending thirty thousand dollars on the, this process when we could get rid of the property, not have to pay, take it down, or not even having that discussion on, on this front?
Well, I, I've already been corrected for being wrong once tonight, but I think I'm right on this one. I believe it was Commissioner Roberts who indicated that she was very interested in having this property put on the tax rolls. And accepting the offer that's in front of us now would not accomplish that. And I agree that it would be a really good thing for the city and our taxpayers to be able to generate property tax revenues if at all possible.
So it's, I, I guess I, I question if it's in the best interest to spend the eight hundred thousand that we've already spent and then hundreds of more thousands of dollars with an unknown return because we don't have an appraisal or any hope on what that is. We hear this mystery number of it's maybe worth a million dollars, but we don't even know that. So I, I grow concerned on that front and I I'll just end.
Perhaps we should get an appraisal.
I, I think, I think back when we were discussing it, if memory serves me correctly, when we first started discussing it too, was the concern of we know it will I'm just going to use the old Bixby property as the example. We know it will get demolished in a timely manner and get demolished if we were doing it as opposed to sometimes when it's already sold in the hands of others, it takes a long time for it to come down. I, I think there was concern on that front, at least in that discussion back in, I think, January, when we talked about it, might have been December, I don't remember. I, I just am throwing that in there because I do remember that also being a concern.
And, you know, again, I go back to the concern of, you know, we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to tear down a building that we then sell the property for four hundred thousand. When we have an offer for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table to buy the property and within six months, that was the terms of their offer, they would tear down this building using their funds, not our funds.
I haven't seen the offer, so I can't comment on that.
You're talking about. I'm, I'm unaware of what offer you're talking about.
I guess I'll let Vince share the offer.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a verbal offer from Adrian College, Frank Rebar. Couple times he spoke with Len at the site, he met once with me in my office, and then we ran into each other last week at the site, and he reiterated it to me then. So I think originally they were going to have it torn down within a year and knowing that that is our concern, he altered it and said he could get it down in six months, but that's, that is what he has expressed.
Maybe we should have that in writing.
And yes, my concern, and I'll say this to any nonprofit that is in our community is we have so many non-taxable properties already in the city of Adrian compared to any other community in our county. And I, I understand the count, you know, we are the county seat, so we have all the county, city, state, federal, all those agencies, plus all of the social service agencies, the Share the Worms, the, the Catherine Cobb's, Boys and Girls Club, all those, all the schools. There is a lot of non-taxable property, and at some point, we have to say no, no more non-taxable property because there's going to be this many of us paying the property taxes and this many people getting the services. So yes, I am concerned about more non-taxable property coming to the city of Adrian. Now, as Commissioner, again, as Commissioner Banky states, you know, if we have a firm offer where that balance might be skewed a little bit because of the costs for tearing it down, could I be persuaded to vote to allow that to happen? Possibly, I, you know, is that going to be our best offer? And we have to remember then, until, and if Adrian College ever does anything with it, we're not going to get any taxes for that property. And we're going to have to spend our tax dollars on police and fire and emergency services and water and everything else to go to that property for perpetuity or until they decide to sell it. So yeah, that, it's a concern of mine.
Do you know what they're planning to do with that property?
No, I'm sorry, I don't. Frank said that the, the library and the business located there had some interest in additional parking if they were to split the parcel. But as far as the college intentions, I don't know.
I agree with Commissioner Roberts. There was a bank built just across the street, tore down a bit building. I have great concerns that that building is going to become a dangerous building. We've already had people breaking in and squatting in that building, a lot of police and fire calls out there. I have, I have a lot of concern about not bringing that building down soon.
I have those same concerns, but I also question the amount of money that that property across the street was purchased for, which was significantly less. And if we're talking seven hundred and fifty thousand of our fund balance that we're going to need to dig into to tear this building down to be recaptured with a small amount of that, that, that becomes a concern. And when we look at the scale of, you know, our further conversation about Wit Farm, we just did this not too long ago with the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute, based on the fact that we want to provide a fourth college to the city of Adrian. And that was eighteen thousand dollars. We're talking about a value to the city of a million dollars. So I think tearing the building down for seven hundred and fifty thousand ish and then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cost of the property. I think that's a, a pretty good deal.
I know you said you're kind of in a time crunch because of it won't be until fall if we don't get them soon. Is this, I just am asking you, Matt, in your opinion, if it's something that we tabled, because like, I didn't know about this Adrian College offer as well, like, you know, that, that it was six months and the amount and all that. If it's something that we could, you know, get in writing and look at, maybe get it appraised really quickly because appraisals shouldn't take that long. If this is something we put on the next meeting, would you think we would still be in the correct timeframe or are we going, you know, so that we can really look at this and assess this and give this the right amount of time?
I think the next meeting would be acceptable. I think that'd be fine. And I will say we should have our bids back on Thursday for asbestos removal and demo, so that'll give you some better ideas too.
Oh, even better.
That'd be great.
And in the meantime, if we can get a firm offer, yes.
I think also besides the offer, we need to find out, at least get an idea of what that property is worth. We continue to throw numbers around. Let's find out what it's really worth. I don't think that Adrian College hasn't done their homework. They know exactly what that property is worth. And that's why they're ma- making such a small offer. I believe it's a small offer, plus no tax base for the rest forever. I think it's important for us to look and see how that property could possibly work for the city to make it a better place and keep moving along. It's developing all the time. I think it's important. It's a large piece of property.
And I guess my question to Vince would be, just in comparison, because it's new construction, what is the tax pull that American One Credit Union is bringing in? So, you know, we always talk about, oh, taxes. Well, if it's five thousand dollars a year, that's going to take a lot to get to a million. And again, empty property that we own is going to sit vacant with a hundred and, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tag to tear it down. That comes from our taxpayer coffers.
So.
I'm in favor of tabling it to the next, to the next meeting and firming up the, the information. A good point. We don't, we don't know for sure what the demo is going to be. We don't know what the asbestos is, and we don't know what the, the property, the value is without the building. So if we can get an appraisal, I don't know if we can actually get a commercial appraisal in two weeks, but it would really be great if we could.
So when we get to the approval of the agenda, we'll just ask for an amendment to table that resolution. Is that okay with everyone when we get there?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Moving on to the Wit Farm site preparation.
If I may have one more piece of information on.
Sorry.
Sorry. Adrian College, Jay Marks texted me, it's student housing that they're interested in putting there on that site. And he doesn't have anything formal, but he has spoken with realtors and they're estimating the value to be about seven fifty to a million dollars. So again, that's the same number that we've been hearing, but I can certainly look to try to get us a better appraisal before next meeting.
So I guess I would say, yeah, seven fifty. So if it's on the low side, then we lose out two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, all right. So the next item for discussion is the Wit Farm site preparation, which we have Todd Brown with us tonight to, to help us with that.
Good evening. Todd Brown with Manneken Smith Group, two thirty seven North Main Street. It's been a while since I've been in front of this group. But good night to be here. This, we're talking about vacant property that the city owns, and the Wit Farm is one of them. Jay Marks asked that, and interim manager Emmerich asked that we enter into negotiation with Ann Arbor Spark, who has a SSRP, a strategic site readiness program, which allows communities to use funding, free, free funding, to do pre-engineering services, to make property more marketable, which is exactly what's in front of you on, in resolution tonight to execute a sub-agreement with Ann Arbor Spark to accept the funding to go through and do a, a vast array of services for the Wit Farm, geotechnical services, topographic services, boundary survey, wetland delineation, capacity studies of the utilities, and all of this work being done to make the property more marketable. You know, the property's been sitting for quite some time without any interest, a little bit of interest on, on some, and some have left, some are continuing to pursue. But what this will do is put a package together, which I think everybody has in front of them right now. There's, it's, there's one that we had done through a different program. But that's the, the package that it would look like of, of the deliverable of what's put together with all of this information. Uh, but that's the the package that it would look like of of the deliverable of what's put together with all of this information. Um, so it puts, it takes all of the services, bundles it into a marketable package and the city's free to do with whatever they want. Um, some of the things that we'll also be looking at are some conceptual design plans for roadways. Um. So which which would be included in this as well. Um, looking at the northern portion where the oil well currently sits and understanding that. That's potentially up for lease at the end of the year or whenever it may be, but working that in as well, using that drive approach. To make a loop to drive uh along M fifty-two, so you have an entrance in and an entrance out. So one in on that uh south side, one out on the north side. Um, the Matt Tomaszewski and the engineering department. Um, we've also worked on some some plans to get that southern drive permitted through M dot already. So that's permitted, ready to go. Um, this funding, if you decide to accept through resolution, um, you know, at the end of the meeting. Will move that property forward and and hopefully anybody who's uh here marketing from the telegram or. Or anywhere else uh may put out a good word to say, hey, uh, we're ready to develop. So. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
I just uh think this is a great program. I remember Tim um Robinson. Uh, and I worked on um the program to try and get Adrian within that spark process. I remember writing a letter of support from. The the schools to join this and hearing uh must have been ten years ago now, the opportunities that they would provide funding for this. So it's great to see it come full circle and. Um, have someone say, hey, we want to give you money um to help invest in your community.
Yeah, it's it's a fantastic opportunity in front of you. And I I very much urge you to take advantage of it.
So the Ann Arbor Spark program would cover the entire cost of creating all of the deliverables, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so no cost to the city.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
Are there any other items for the work study session?
Commissioner Castleberry, did you want to talk what we?
Yes. The um. Uh, Commissioner Roberts reached out to me after the last meeting and and asked me about um veterans doing something for the bicentennial. There's nothing. Currently um for veterans during to happen during the bicentennial. So I reached out to a few of um. Local veterans, veteran groups, and we we. It kind of keeps leading back to Monument Park and there has been some funds raised for Monument Park. Apparently the funds are not enough to fix the monument and there were bricks promised in lieu of the um. Uh, donations as well. And so there's not enough funding to do the bricks and the donation or and the monument. Um. So Commissioner Banky and I were talking, he's already talked to Brana, he's me- meeting with Brana this week too. Um. Talking to uh Commissioner, or she's no longer Commissioner, uh, Ms. Bolton about. Turning that funding over to um. Do we want to take that on as a city was my question, um, or do we want to turn it over to the um? Ask her to turn it over to the community foundation and continue fundraising efforts um for Monument Park. Uh, we both agreed the community foundation would be the better. Um, people can, you know, donate money there, they invest and it can be an ongoing fund for Monument Park to help. Um. Bring more, keep, maintain, et cetera. Um, I've reached out and I'm I'm talking to some other organizations to help um fix. Uh, Commissioner Banky and I talked about fixing the um. Cannon. I I'm never gonna say that right, but um. The basis for the cannon. Um. And I have some veteran groups that are interested in potentially helping us fix those. So there's the veteran community, I mean, we're we're pretty much taught um trades. In the military and so. Getting them involved in some of the things to fix that we can fix, I think would be good. And I think that they would feel very proud and and good about that. Um, so my question is, do we want to take on that money or should we? It um. Request that Ms. Bolton, you know, turn that over to the community foundation. We can continue to raise money with the community foundation to fix uh Monument Park.
It'd be my thought, community foundation. I I immediately thought that and and especially because I think people would feel more comfortable as well. Donating to that and in, you know, veterans or or any anybody else and feeling that's. There's just always a distrust of, you know, municipal government. There always will be and I I feel like that is. That that builds that trust and they would be more inclined to donate.
Cause I I think from our perspective, the conversation that Commissioner Castleberry and I had was, A, that becomes a city park. So or that is a city park. So we want to make sure that the conversation that we have. Um, is in concert with um the Parks Department in concert with the commission. And then um, you know, we're taking off our commissioner hats. Um, because I guess I would say I was a donor to that fund, so I want to make sure that that money gets to the right place. And then um Commissioner Castleberry, as a veteran, wants to make sure that there's um the proper recognition and. Still looking at the bigger restoration of that, you know, from a layman's term, I go out there and I look, I'm like, yep, it's an old monument. Looks good. Um, it's not leaning, uh, but I'm sure there's a lot of other work there. And last I heard from the, you know, merely. Twenty thousand dollars that was raised, that would just not even and kind of just post COVID. Um, that wasn't even half of what uh was being projected for some of the the metalwork restoration. Uh, and then I think the bigger issue is, you know, trying to. Pull in again, once the, if the money goes to the community foundation, which it sounds like that's the nod. Um, Commissioner Castleberry and I are meeting um Thursday morning with um Brana um at the community foundation. If that's uh. The the nod we get to then um see, do we pull in the people who donated and say, you know, do you want a brick? Your brick's gonna cost fifty bucks and you paid eighty-five for it. So do you really want a brick or? You know, those types of conversations, or do you want to put that in? Because, you know, there is an obligation for a brick and. I think part of that is how do we close out that loop and is there a brick bailout? Um, so that those mon- those monies can be used for the monument.
I I. Honestly, think most people, most people that have donated that I have talked to are more interested in. Fixing the monument, et cetera, and maintaining Monument Park than than bricks. But so hopefully we can. Make sure that's. How everyone wants to go.
For anybody. No, and I I agree with you. Lenawey Community, we keep talking about Brana. I'm sure there's at least one person either online who don't, who. Doesn't know who Brana is. We're talking about Brana Colley, who is the executive director of Lenawey Community Foundation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. May I get a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to table Resolution R twenty-five dashes zero one three?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
And Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to our regular agenda, Resolution R twenty-five dash zero twelve is from finance. It is a resolution to approve a proposal from BSNA software for card and online customer payment services. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
At this time, we will have any commissioner discussion or questions and I will begin that. Can you explain this? Um. Um, acting, I, you know, you have a lot, you have a mouthful here to say, acting city administrator Vince Emmerich, just so that everybody understands what we are voting on. Thank you.
Sure, Mayor. Uh, so right now the city uses a system called Point and Pay. Um. And there's a, there's a lot that that Point and Pay doesn't do. Um, they. Have not enabled online payments for us, for starters. So we're looking at BSNA. System, which is a module that can be purchased that integrates with the software the city already uses. And that would enable all city departments to take online payments. It would uh allow mobile payments. Um, there would be upgrades to technology and software. We would take Apple Pay and Google Pay and things that we're not able to accept right now. So. It would be a a big jump in technology and convenience uh for citizens.
Are there any discussion or questions?
Welcome to the twenty-first century. Yes.
Helluva Lord.
Thank you, Lord.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to res- to Resolution R twenty-five dashes zero fourteen, it's from the city commission. It is a resolution to accept the resignation of city clerk Christie Lowe. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion? We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R twenty-five dash zero fifteen is from the city commission. It is a resolution to appoint deputy clerk Erica Jardine as acting city clerk. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or questions?
Are you ready, Erica?
I've been ready. We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R twenty-five dash zero sixteen is from economic development. It is a resolution to award a bid for demolition of Winter Street properties. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or dis- excuse me, or discussion on that?
Um, just a discussion. I know uh at least Iowa's uh approached by the low bidder. That uh did not receive the bid because the recommendation's going to the next highest bidder. Is that correct? Uh.
Yes, that's correct.
And um, I guess my question is, um, our standard is that the bid process is low bid. Or the the other, the other process is uh best value. Um, those are the two standards. So a low bid would be. Obviously, the low bid. Um, the state of Michigan uses best value in their bid process. So do you know which one that we use?
I believe it's best value. Uh, we, the city has not always gone with the lowest bid.
Okay, it, so that that would be in the bid document. So I guess I would just question with um if we're doing low bid to. Um, you you can exclude someone through low bid because of a rubric and do we have rubrics and processes that that in place? And I guess. Maybe um, this is just my subtle suggestion to say that would be a good time for us to um. Look at low bid versus best value and then also the importance of incorporating um. Incorporating a rubric process uh that's uh in there for awarding those uh bid prod- projects. And. I do know that, you know, the the research that we that had been done, um, you know, brought up some concerns with the low bidder. So that's why we were. Making the shift to the second one. So that's um, that's a good um, good catch on our our part, but also just want to make sure that we're not always tied to. Low bid, I'm the low bid, and then we need to explain our way out of that where best value is um. A a better opportunity for us, a better position for us to be sitting in.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R twenty-five dash zero seventeen is from economic development. It is a resolution to authorize the city administrator to accept and execute a sub-grant agreement. And corresponding documents for the strategic site readiness program in relation to property located. At twenty-nine thirty North Adrian Highway, Adrian, Michigan. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, it is, we will have general public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the city chambers first. And also just to remind you that we will not respond. It is a time for you to have public comment. But we may respond in commissioner comments. If we can, if not, we may approach you after, or you are always more than welcome to approach us after the meeting as well.
I I was just curious. I'd I'd like to get maybe after the meeting, some clarification about the process that happened. Of having a motion that wasn't there available for public comment. Maybe that's just standard. I don't know. Um, and I think we have two things going on there. One was a conversation that I wish hadn't been done in public about. How how supportive everybody is of the police chief. Um, I I don't know if anybody, maybe criminals aren't supportive of him. Um, but I I think he's been terrific. But the other one is process. And what people would see, people in the city would see as going outside the process. And being kind of surprised without public comment, which is why I had my hand up for so long. I knew you couldn't recognize me. But I still wanted to kind of object with how that had happened. So I will ask for for clarification about whether this is something we can expect to happen. Thank you.
Judith. We know who you are, but you want to state it for your name and.
Sorry, yes. Judith Hammerly, eleven eighty-three Glen Hill Avenue in Adrian. Sorry, that is part of the, sorry, I didn't catch it either.
Yale Dunway, City of Adrian. I also live in, I've renamed my neighborhood, University Heights. Um, just one comment, and I don't know who to congratulate for this, but our sidewalks are being fixed. This was last year's project. So if it's Chief Emmerich, we can convert or Matt, thank, thank you very much, Matt. So um. We've got a long Elm Street to be, because every block. Anyways, be thus may. Um, in regards to um. Land, buildings, whatever we own, if we're going to disperse them somehow, get an appraisal. Cause this county is on the hook for that Phoenix project. And we own acres and acres of cement with weeds. And I guess that's all.
Carolyn Marr, City of Adrian. For decades, Adrian has enjoyed a reputation as a haven for slum lords. A place where starting a business was met with sometimes unsurmountable hurdles. Business owners and restaurants were harassed with trivialities. And building owners were allowed to neglect needed maintenance. A new thought process is happening in which new ideas coming up now are appreciated. Encouragement and help. Encouragement and help for new biz- businesses. A school and dormitories on vacant land. Tearing down of old buildings and construction of new housing, both on Winter Street and the Bixby site. Development of a valuable resource, the river. Construction of a sports complex, a downtown square with park area, a vibrant market and a bike trail. These are all enhancements to life in Adrian which are appreciated by young people looking for a place to settle or staying after growing up here. I strongly encourage you to take advantage of these opportunities and move Adrian forward for the sake of our residents and future residents.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. Congratulations, Chief. As far as spending 20 or $30,000 on a committee to find the best candidate for this? Is that the same committee that found the last candidate we had? Because that was money not well spent, I don't think. As far as the Adrian Inn, we're into it for 800,000 that we bought it for, $300,000 to fix it up so we could let people live in it. Now we're at a million one. I say sell it to the college for a million one, let them tear it down, or don't sell it to them, period. That's the condition. And I don't know how they're going to tear it down in six months if we gotta have asbestos abatement done within the next month. If we don't make a decision on it to sell it now and it takes four months to sell it to City of Adrian or Adrian College, how are they going to get it tore down in six months? Because they're still going to miss the timeline with the asbestos abatement. As far as Monument Park. Point of sale. We have to keep our, our places up in order to sell them. They have to be neat, ordered. Not dilapidated. But I guess it does not go for the City of Adrian with the Parks Department, right? I mean, they don't have to, they have a Parks and Maintenance Department, right? They don't have to take care of the parks? How did that statue get such disrepair that it needs a lot of work now? That should have been taken care of every year that the parks were out there. That should have been taken care of. Everything that's in our parks gets paid for. There's a fee or a grant set up for that. So why aren't they taking care of the stuff that's in the parks? Why does it have to fall on the city taxpayers? Or generous donations to fixes stuff when it's already should have been fixed to begin with? Thank you for your time.
Scott Marvin, City of Adrian. I think Chief Emrick, um, is a hardworking and caring individual. But I don't, uh, I, I don't feel like this was a transparent making this a decision tonight for a city commissioner meeting. I remember commissioners stating they didn't want to rush the administration search. Several of you did that, said that. A, a couple of discussions was held before city commissioner meetings with the chief that was not all, not, didn't even, the other city commissioners wasn't even, I'm sorry, let me start over. I'm a little nervous, sorry. Couple of commi- uh, discussions was held before the city commissioner meeting with the chief not at all, all the city commissioners didn't even know or discuss. Then this was dropped in your laps without shareholders' feedback. I wrote a letter to the city commissioners on this, what I like to see in the new city commissioner. Well, I guess I won't be sending that letter out now. There was no chance for a public comment for a study session on administrative search for discussion regarding hiring Vince. I'm concerned about the city government. Just a reminder, city elections are held this year. Thank you.
At this time, we will open it up to the Zoom participants.
Don Taylor, one, a 475 Meadowbrook Drive, City of Adrian. I'm really quite appalled by what happened tonight. You'd have to search long and hard to find anybody in the city who didn't respect Vince Emrick as much as I do. But I have to agree that you should have followed the process. You led everybody in this community to believe you had a process. It was in the, the telegram. It was in the village, in the, uh, anyway, voice. So I must side with Commissioners Banky and Roberts in that you really let the citizens down. And, and Acting Administrator Emrick already said he's happy to be part of a search process. I say let the process play out. And I'm really disappointed that this came out in a way that it did. And, 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 uh, in your open forum or up, your discussions before we even get to the agenda. So enough said. I think you know how I feel. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, we will move, move on to Commissioner comments.
I have several comments. One, I'd like to address a comment made about, uh, if this is outside the process and if we could expect to have this happen again, or I can't remember exactly what Judith said, but it does happen on occasion when there are things that we have to do that come up uh, after the packet is published on Thursday. It doesn't happen often. But there have been times over the last almost seven years that I've been on here where things come up that either we didn't realize or there's timeframes. So it does happen. Can we expect it to happen normally? No, and it doesn't. It happens once every, I don't know, six months? I don't know. Not very often. So just know that this is not usual business. This is not how we normally do business. A couple of other things. So first of all, um, didn't get a chance. I'd like to thank Christie Lowe for her service. As a city clerk, she did an excellent job in the short time that she was here. She will be greatly missed. Um, Christie, I don't know if you're on our, online or not. I can only read some of the names up there. But Christie, if you are, thank you. Uh, Erica, I'd like to thank you for stepping in as interim city clerk. I think you're, you've done an excellent um, job since October, um, and, uh, will continue to do an excellent job. Uh, I'd like to thank Michelle Dewey for all of the work she's done over the last two to three weeks, well, several months on the bicentennial and the website. If you haven't been to our website and all of the stuff, um, Michelle and I meet almost weekly and, uh, to work on bicentennial things. And she really is the glue that has been holding, um, this all together, even though she's kind of in the background. But I know she's hates it that I point her out, but it really is her, it, it, I tell her things and they just happen. And it's amazing. So she's done a great job with that. Uh, I'd like to thank and acknowledge and make sure everyone knows that Main Street DDA has put out a year-long calendar. If you haven't seen it, please go to, at least on Facebook. I know we all received it in an email. Um, well, I shouldn't take that back. I know I received it in an email. If you haven't received it, reach out to one of us, reach out to Jay Marks. Drawing blank, Katie? Kate? What is our new events coordinator person? I'm so bad. I haven't met her yet. Uh, Kate, I think it's Kate. Um, she's done a great job on putting out the calendar and there's lots of activities on there. Um, in May is our, um, our Oz thing downtown, all the dog walkers and all that stuff for First Friday. So look forward to that. Uh, some of you in the audience I recognize from, um, being at the county meeting. So I'd like to publicly thank the county for having an evening meeting. Um, that was very well attended compared to their daytime meetings. Uh, the next one is, if I have my date correct, June 26th. So please, if you're interested and can't get to the daytime meetings for the county, it's on June, June 26th. Check their website to be sure, but I'm pretty sure that's the date. Uh, some other dates, just to make sure you're aware of Habitat for Humanities Pickleball Tournament that benefits the City of Adrian. Um, Restoration Projects is Saturday, May 17th, um, out at Heritage Park. So if you're a pickleball player or just want to come and support, that's on Saturday, May 17th. Sunday, May 18th is the Greg Adams Erase the Stigma Race, um, right downtown, right over here. The 5K race through, um, through the east side to support mental health initiatives in our community. And lastly, I wrote down moving on. This is something I've had to explain to many people is, so even though that I disagreed with how it happened, what happened, I voted against many of my fellow commissioners. We are a board. We are a board and I am one vote. Now that this vote has happened tomorrow, I will meet with our new administrator and move on. There will not be any animosity. There will not be any issues. And we are going to congratulate and work with our new administrator to make Adrian the best that it can be. Okay, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Roberts, I'd also like to echo that. Uh, congratulations to, um, I, I think it's going to be hard to not call you Chief, uh, Emrick for, uh, a while. But, um, also, um, there was the, the discussion that we never got to finish that was, uh, brought up initially by, uh, Commissioner Castleberry about, um, which of the two search firms do we use to, um, move forward with strategic planning? With making sure that you have a successful first year under your belt that, uh, develops, uh, an evaluation. Um, so I guess, uh, if we kick that down the, the, the road to next time and, um, and I guess I would say, um, maybe that's, since we have that, maybe that's a recommendation from Vince. But again, I know this is comments, uh, so maybe Vince can weigh in on that next time as well. Um, on who, uh, who he would recommend or prefer to work with. And then also, um, if he could brief us on the search process for a new police chief as well. And I hope I didn't overstep, because I saw you kind of eager.
I thought you were going to make a motion. That's why I saw.
I don't know whether it's a good time to talk about it, but, uh, Vince, my understanding is you have a candidate that will be presented to us at the next meeting for Community Development Director. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
We anxiously await with bated breath.
Um, I would like to weigh in a little bit about the conversation earlier today. Um, I am thankful that Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Banky shared their comments. Uh, we agree to disagree up here. This is not an easy job. I've been sitting here for about five and a half years. Um, thank you, Carolyn, for sharing progress. Um, sometimes it's like a load and a weight off of my shoulders when I get to see some of the progress we've had because usually it's not what I hear. Um, Scotty, I, please send your email. I think, um, we will be, all be pleasantly surprised at how much Chief Emrick, sorry, I'm, this is going to be hard. Listens to what our constituents say and how much positive change is coming. I strongly believe that he is the best choice for us and um, I strongly believe that we're going to move some mountains in the next few years with him. So please send your email. I, I look forward to reading it and making sure that the things that you want to see in our community happen, happen. That's the only way we know, if you tell us. So thank you for that. Thank you all for your comments tonight. I do appreciate every one of you coming in and sharing. Thank you very much.
And I, again, echo Commissioner Castleberry's comments. Understand it's somewhat controversial for what we do from time to time. As Commissioner Roberts said, it's not unusual to have a motion from the floor. You know, I, I think we've doing, doing the right thing. I agree that we're going to see tremendous progress. We're already seeing it on a day-to-day basis. Um, and that's why I felt so strongly about having Vince as our, as our administrator. What he's done in just nine weeks is incredible. And he's getting all the really hard work done now. And when that's finished, he'll really be able to focus on the big picture, the major projects, not having to deal with little things. It'll, it'll all be, it's going to lean hard. Um, I'm sure he's going to lean hard on his department heads. Um, and that's what leadership training is going to be all about. And I would suggest that we do make that a work-study discussion for the next one. Decide who is, both firms that we talked to offer leadership training. Uh, they'll help us develop the evaluation tool that we've all said we need and want to have. They've, um, uh, in addition to that strategic planning, another, you know, thing that we need to do a better job of. Um, our class, our past strategic planning, um, plans that we've come up with haven't really done the things that a strategic plan should do. There hasn't been timelines and accountability and, and goals. I mean, there's goals, but they're kind of imagined, for lack of a better term. So we've got some professionals that presented to us last, at our last meeting talking primarily about a search, but they brung so much more to the table that we can take advantage of. So I'm looking forward to having those discussions and, um, just one more step in moving the city forward. Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot. One more thing about the bicentennial. Uh, we would like the residents' participation in the time capsule. And so at City Hall where we, where you pay your bills and also at the Adrian Public Library, Adrian District Library, and soon to be at the Historical Museum, once I get there when they're open. There are, uh, regular size envelopes, just a letter-sized envelope that is stamped on the outside. Adrian Bicentennial has your name and address on it. We invite all residents of the City of Adrian, any business owners, to um, write a letter, write a poem, write whatever you would like and put it inside that envelope and seal it and return it to the museum, the library or City Hall. And that will be included into the time capsule to be opened in 50 years. So there will be a list of, and we're asking for your name and address, um, so that we can keep a list of everyone who has submitted a, uh, an envelope, a letter. So, um, hopefully we, you know, people will be interested in, uh, participating in that. Like to see, we won't know what's in there for 50 years and most of us will not be here in 50 years, but there might be some uh, like Joaquin and Dallas over there. They might be here.
And Erin.
Yeah, in 50 years. So, um, please take an envelope, take five, distribute them to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family. And, um, we hope to get many back.
And just to clarify, they won't all go into the ground because we do not think they're all going to fit into the time capsule that is going to go underground. But there's going to be an above-ground time capsule as well that is going to be in safekeeping at the Historical Society. So um, that way there can be more participation. Otherwise it was going to limit. And Don Taylor, yes, your postcards have already been submitted for the time capsule that you already gave me as well. So. Um, and just a reminder, the bicentennial, uh, meeting, if you would like to attend, is next Monday. Um, and it is at 6:00 PM at, in the basement of the library. We always welcome and encourage all to come and, and get volunteers for us. That would be great as well. But thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.